Today is August 9th, 2018. Coming to you live from this ragged city council meeting. A little bit Jerry Springer, a little bit Maury. Okay, so the meeting started with them handing out this city council meeting protocol. Okay, and it basically was giving the citizens the basic understanding of how you're to conduct yourself in the meeting. Um, they didn't follow it themselves, but I'll read you the part about the Louisiana revised statute 4214D, which states, "Except school boards which shall be subject to RS 4215, each public body conducting a meeting which is subject to the notice requirements of RS 4219A shall allow a public comment period at any point in the meeting prior to action on an agenda item upon which a vote is to be taken. The governing body may adopt reasonable rules and restrictions regarding such comment period." Now, "The governing body may adopt reasonable rules and restrictions regarding such comment period." They have this underline, as if this justifies the mayor's actions in once again cutting people off and just being very rude, as if he is a king on a throne, and this is why I'm trying to, I love the Lord, he heard my cry. He pitied every ground, long as I live, while troubles rise. I will hasten to his throne, just not in an elected position. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Yes, I still love the Lord, but as the mayor, I can't act like I'm appointed and anointed. No, I'm elected and expected to do my job. There's a difference, so we gotta stop this, you guys. I mean, we can love a person at home. We do not need this man over our city. I apologize to anyone who is offended. This is why y'all need to be at the house. So, "The governing body may adopt reasonable rules and restrictions regarding such comment period." This is still supposed to be a joint. What are those rules? What are they? He's still trying to confuse people with whether or not they can ask a question or a comment. Now, a question is a comment. But that's English, and I'm teaching play English, real English being talked somewhere else. Okay, so basically Branch allowed attorney Raymond Cannon to give the protocol for this meeting, and he basically read this information that I just gave you all. Um, "Council member Whitney motion for an addition to be added to the agenda." Okay, and council member Sims asked about why the job openings weren't posted that the mayor had on the agenda as appointing. Okay, now, basically Finleyson tried to make it seem like this was already on the agenda. It was not, and it's very pertinent that the council members remain stonewalled like you are while you're up there. Do not get riled by the crowd. You're doing a very good job with that. I'm so proud of you gentlemen. I'm sorry, Ms. Day. I'm sorry, Mr. Finleyson. I just, I just, we need two more people up there. They're about the people and not about the mayor. The whole purpose of the city council board is so that the levelization of what the people need meets what the mayor spends. So if it were not for Whitney Robinson and Sims, we would basically be consistently depleting the resources that Tallulah continues to bring in. And what you have to understand about Tallulah is we're hardworking people. We're not people who sit around and just take handouts. People around here have two or three jobs. You may have some people on Section 8, but what a lot of people don't say about that is, until your Section 8 is approved, you have to live in that place and pay rent. These girls do that. They move in, they pay rent, they wait on a voucher to come through, and sometimes the person that they're written from will change their mind and say they don't want the voucher. And so now they gotta still pay rent and go hunt down a place. These are hardworking people here. And so for a person to not feel they owe us an explanation about where the money is going, I don't know. So anyway, let's get back to what happened there. So basically, they added this to the agenda to basically post those job openings, to have those jobs open. Now, on the agenda for the night, and I'm trying to find things as I go. He has appointments for number 11, Mayor, 2018 through 2022 appointments. City Clerk Fiscal Manager Gerald Odom, City Attorney Joshua Leonard, which would be his bond attorney. That's the guy he wants to have us sign our $500,000 to. So is that that man's retainer? Is he retaining this man so he can finagle our money? Okay, well, let's, let's, we, we need to ask ourselves these questions, Tallulah. And what you have to understand is politics gets exciting when you realize how much power it is in the people. It's in us. The frustration you saw on the mayor tonight is because he understands, whoa, all I'm in control of here is what goes on in this meeting, and he just felt like if he lost that, he was losing everything. So basically, he wants to use Raymond Cannon as a special attorney. And, okay, you guys, here's the thing. My aunt, Joy Jackson, is the mayor's court judge. I haven't said anything about my aunt, um, because she's running for judge, and I do not want anyone to spit on her because of me. However, at this time, because the city council members voted my aunt out of a job, notice how big of a, a person I, I'm being. I, I knew through this whole ordeal that my aunt's job was at risk. I did not tell anyone. I did not reveal anything because it was not for me too until the council members moved. And you don't see me trying to act like it's personal. It's not, it's politics, it's a job. She's an educated woman. She's remarkable. Anyone who's gone to her for a court case, anyone who's seen her in court, you know she's lethal, she's surgical. Her candidacy for judge is separate for, from this situation with the mayor, and I'm honestly glad she's no longer up there. Okay, so let's take a piece from that because that's how you act with politics. There are casualties in, 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 in love war and politics. I'm sorry, okay? So everybody needs to learn to be big boys and girls when our mommies and daddies and aunties and uncles get in office or appointed into positions, and then they have to go home because that's what you do, okay? So basically, um, they wanted us to give our address, our phone number. I didn't give my phone number. I gave two addresses because, you know, I'm an ignorant bitch. I stay ready. Um, Dr. Anthony Wilson asked why did we need all this information? There was some kind of dispute between him and the mayor. There's always dispute between Dr. Anthony Wilson and the mayor about something. A little power play there. If anyone looks at these videos, you know that Dr. Anthony Wilson is one of the investors. He and his brother, Mr. Gary Crockett, are interested in buying the, uh, water facility plant. They're homeboys. They didn't win it got their money. They want to invest in us, give jobs, really certify people, make sure they're taking their tests and earning the money that they get, and the mayor is really fighting this dude. And it's almost like I'm sick of him and the mayor, but that's for another day. All right, so he reminded the mayor that he skipped public comments. So after they wrote, read this information to us, they did not allow us to comment, even though number five's agenda meeting, uh, appointment was public comments from citizens. They didn't allow us to. They allowed the, they allowed attorney Raymond Cannon because he's not the person. He's not appointed. If these people show up to work and collect a check, this is fraud because these people have just said they don't want them up there, okay? Um, so he reminded the mayor also that, you know, he, the, the attorney took up the time for the comments. However, the mayor did not allow us to comment. Superintendent CJ Oni came up at this appointed time on the agenda, and he basically was saying what they're doing around the city, and which is nothing. I'm sorry, Mr. Oni, you ain't doing nothing. I'm sorry. He used to belong to Seven Star Missionary Baptist Church. Seven Star is a church that my grandfather used to pastor, that my father and mother currently co-pastor. Um, and we are out of a building right now. Um, basically, we are trying to rebuild that church. My father also pastors Travelers Rest, and that is where we're going right now. So I haven't seen Mr. Oni since I was a little girl. Uh, but Mr. Oni, you, you know, they said something about continuation of tearing down old houses, getting rid of piles. Now, we have a pile on a lot, a house that needed to be cleared. That pile is not going, okay? He talked about the Walnut Street drainage and mosquito control. Now, the summer's almost over with, you guys. We've been fighting mosquitoes. I haven't even talked about it, but you saw me fanning down a fly. And this is supposed to be a city, you know? And they aren't doing any of these things. He was talking about how the manholes in the streets are sinking, and they used hot mix, you know? Which is basically like, it's like a mix between tar and concrete, and you heat it up, and you patch, and you, you know, all that crap. Anyway, uh, but he says the street needs complete repair. I guess he said, Jesus, let me tell the people something. He said something about the project on the fairground. It's like a water trap that needs to be diverted to the bayou, and that's still ongoing. Whitney asked him, was there anyone in charge of code enforcement? He said, not per se, and we know that is the truth. Now, here's the thing, is Mr. Oni capable? Yes. So why haven't we been doing the job, y'all? It's a hurting feeling when you know these people personally, you know? And we can talk about the gang bangers. We can talk about the drug dealers. We are bona fide churchgoers. And we are disappointing and crucifying Christ like we don't even know him. Okay, so it basically goes on to where Ms. L. Haggard asked if it can be increased. Okay, Ms. Lamia Haggard was on the agenda to get her school approved, and I'm so happy for her. However, she was on there for one year. She raised the motion or commented that she would like to be in there for five years because she has to bring the building up to code. The mayor promised he'd keep her in the building, and she was like, no. So, um, council member Robinson raised the motion to move it to five years, and it was passed unanimously. Um, then we go down to, he asks again about this $26,900 to supplement $150,000 for repairs. He gets some woman to stand up and say, basically, the reason why we can't see bids. And see, here's the thing that I don't get about the mayor. You could at least show people where you're spending money so that people have a picture of what to expect, and that's why he's having a problem with us. We're expecting so many things from this elected official, and he's not showing any of it. He and this white woman basically, you know, conjoined together, you know, on a no need to see the bid until the money is approved type of deal. So I raised the question. She said that the bid was coming in right at $140,000. I raised the question, if the bid's at $140,000 right now, and we have $150,000 in a grant, why can't we start on the work with the $150,000 and bring up a need for $26,900? Like, where is this number coming from when ain't nobody started on no work? The motion did not pass. Okay, Dr. Wilson got up again, and it was like, uh, he was threatened with eviction because he was stating his credentials. Now, this is where I think the mayor is threatened by Dr. Wilson, and this is where I know Dr. Wilson can kind of feel the mayor is threatened by him. He's more educated. He has more education. He has more of the ground training and work experience that comes with this type of situation. And so it's a macho thing. That's why I don't understand why they won't let a woman have a crack at things, right? Women don't get macho. We just go back and forth, and we may nag for a few hours, but you know what? We gonna say, okay, girl, whatever, and we'll move on to the next agenda. They kept getting tangled up in wordplay. You know, it's despicable how you're running this city. You're not gonna talk to me like this. Your days are numbered. That's a threat. No, that's not a threat. And so I'm like, oh, my God, just let the man state his credentials. He wouldn't let him state his credentials. I couldn't find them all out. He has several years working with municipalities, nine years in something to do with water systems, and we couldn't hear all of it because the mayor and Dr. Wilson kept getting into a little spat. So much that, okay, Dr. Wilson did bring up that the clarifiers were supposed to be bought and paid for new ones with the $375,000 the mayor borrowed from the city last year. So he put up a bond for that money last year. That money went on something we don't know what, you guys. So, okay, um, Mr. Stanley Mason got up and asked, could he add to the budget? Why couldn't the budget be added to the agenda for amendment? If you want this money, why can't we talk about the budget? Um, he also pointed out that attorney Cannon should not still be sitting up there, that they'd already basically said they did not want him. They wanted those jobs posted. And this was before they even voted these people out and said, no. The mayor goes into this whole thing about, oh, and, um, Mr. Sims, council member Sims stated that CJ Oni should be on the list. His job should be on the list of appointments, and they wanted him out too. That that was an appointment position, and they didn't want him anymore either. And so, um, the mayor basically said that they were gonna be doing things differently, and it was a long explanation as to why. But, uh, Mr. Mason cut him off and was like, oh, that's right. He was basically saying that these people were already appointed because he wasn't a new mayor. He'd already been elected once before. So these people were his people that were already in position. This was his team. Mr. Mason told him that if they were his team, why was the appointments on the agenda? Because once you're newly elected, it doesn't matter how many times you serve, you're newly elected. And that the board did not want these people on the appointment. They said they wanted those jobs posted. He has them down for appointments, and that's how everybody lost their job. I'm sorry, Angel, I love you. Okay, so, um, he kind of got into it with Mr. Mason too. I like Mr. Mason's attitude better than Dr. Wilson's, and I will tell you why. Dr. Wilson has to know how we don't need the braggadociousness, and that's not even a word. It's super caliphricalistic, expialidocious. Him and the mayor and the mayor's people can leave that, you know what I'm saying? Somewhere else. Take that somewhere else, please. You know what I'm saying? I left early because I'm not, when I get upset, this is not me. This is me, you know what I'm saying? I'm, so I don't do all it with people. I just went on and was like, you know what? No, I'm not. Once they started that, it was like Dr. Wilson and the mayor's son basically got into some kind of spat. Um, the mayor's son was totally out of line, and with the mayor's son getting out of line like that, I can definitely go ahead and say that his wife and daughter were out of line too. You guys, you know, I, I love you all as, uh, as an image in the black community, regardless of whether you're elected or pastors or not. For people to be in a position where they've sustained home and family, I love it. So let me say right now to the Branch family, I'm not your enemy. Um, I've never been your friend. I've always been cordial because I've been raised that way to be cordial. Um, I saw a side of you guys that let me know you all are too emotionally attached to a political position, and it's not healthy for you as people to be that emotionally attached. Detach yourself from the politics. I'm not, um, gonna ever go back and forth with people. As best as I can, I always walk away from situations. And wherever I've been placed in a bad situation, you know, I've always regretted. I always place situations back in my mind, and I say, what could I do differently? What could have I said differently? And I'm pretty sure, you know, the mayor and his family may be feeling that way internally. I'm pretty sure Dr. Wilson may be feeling that way internally. Um, and I personally want to congratulate Mr. Mason because for some reason, I don't know, the mayor doesn't like Mr. Mason. I don't know who Mr. Mason is. Mr. Mason looks like some people that are here from Tallulah. But as far as who he is personally, I've never, I do not know him. Um, he's very informative. He's very intelligent. He's very cool-headed. And if you notice on my YouTube channel, I have myself with a hat that says "cool" across the top because I want people to understand that you have to have a cool hat. Put that cool hat on, y'all. Everybody, everybody across the town. So Ms. Gwen Payne got up. Very strong situation. I do not want to leave this stuff out. She read statute 33, 386 from the Laurison Act. She did a very great job. Uh, she was verbally attacked by Mr. Oni when she stated that no matter how they changed his job title, they could call it Sugar Pie Honey Bunch. She said the job title could be called that. She didn't say anything about him. He, you know, kind of answered up passionately. That's not my name. My name is Oni. And my thing is this, you guys, oh, and Mr. Branch's son. When Dr. Wilson was like, talking, Mayor Branch's son was like, yo, three minutes up. Dr. Wilson said, who are you? His security? And you know that's a tall man. That big, that big nigga stood up. No, I'm his son. Ain't nobody got time for this. Uh, check please. Thank you, waiter. I, I put that one finger up, and my musician tells me, Fanny, put that finger down. What do you, what you got a question? Yes, where's the exit? Thank you. This is my church finger. Baby, I gotta buy it there because I'm not the one. I can't, I don't deal in emotional situations. That's what I try to tell people. You have to be quiet with people. You don't know what to expect from people when emotions start running high. And when it comes to city council meetings, everybody needs to go ahead and, you know, I mean, I'm taking, get you some nerve medication, and you can say what you want, baby. If you're running around mad because people asking questions about what you do as a job, you called yourself a CEO. You called yourself a boss. People have been around here applauding your whole livelihood by, you know, sponsoring it with our money. And to act the way they acted tonight, Mr. Oni, the Branch family, you guys, you know, grow up, grow up. So basically, Dr. Wilson and Mr. Mason had to remind the mayor that that $500 fine and that $60, 60 days in jail thing that they were trying to apply to the city council members, it could apply to him too. Um, the police chief, I don't know what to say. Uh, Chief McCoy, I'm yet praying for you. And you got a job to do up there at that meeting to be partial, I'm sorry, and we gotta just, to be partial to city workers. You're not, you are an entity of yourself, chief. You're, you're not under the mayor. You're not under the city council, okay? You are the law. The law stands alone. Don't you get your ass up there buddying with them people? And yes, I'm talking like this because this is a personal thing to me now because we're taking it too far in the realm of the oppressed. And we've already talked about the pedagogy of the oppressed. I have that video I'm gonna share again. You guys, we've got to really get to a point where we stop wearing our emotions on our sleeve and just saying, this is how I am. No, you have to learn to cope. You have to learn to cope. People have made fun of me because I've admitted that I'm bipolar, but it's because I admit that, that I'm not mad at people if they show up at my mother's house and she teaches school, and they're mad at her because they're trying to figure out why she put their kid out of school. I can stand out there and help to calm and diffuse the situation down because, hey, I already know my problem, they don't. You understand what I'm saying? Some of these people gotta admit they got emotional issues that are tied to oppression and maybe the, 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 the God that they serve so hard will set them free. Because that's the thing about Christianity too. Some of us still on milk, you know? We not on the meat of the word because if we were on the meat, we wouldn't be so sensitive about these things. God watched his son get crucified and nailed to a cross. Y'all can't stand to hear your job be threatened or people to ask for a detailed budget or folks to tell people the way the city is, is, is being ran. Those days are numbered. The mayor called that a threat when Dr. Wilson said, your days, the way you're running things, they're numbered. Oh, that's a threat. Remove him. Chief McCoy rose up to remove him. What I do apply with Chief McCoy, once he realized people would calm down, he wasn't trying to just put us out. That's why I left, okay? I went on left because I didn't want the chief to say, get out. I didn't want him to have to put his hands on me personally and remove me. I've had issues in this town with the police based on various situations that can remain, can name, remain nameless. It wasn't no, uh, police records. But I've been, you know, detained, held, you know, sent somewhere, and we can talk about that at a later date. So I just didn't want no smoke with the new chief. You know what I'm saying? I like him. I think he's okay. Um, I feel like he's in a volatile position, but you are your own, you, you are your own boss, chief. You're, you're not beholden to the mayor. You don't owe him any loyalty. You don't owe us any loyalty. You owe the law that you stand behind loyalty. Um, when you allow the mayor's family and Mr. Oni to speak out, and you just basically sat there, and then when we started to respond by saying, it's just politics, and you stood up, you know, that's why I went on removing myself, you know, and I'm gonna go ahead and type up this petition, and we're gonna start circulating it to see if we can get the mayor repealed, recalled, or at least repentive, repentative of his actions. Maybe he'll repent, you know? God will forgive him, you know, and we'll just have to see him on church day because it ain't no way we gonna have to see him up there too long. Ms. Hayden got up, and she asked about monies that were supposed to be provided for children and for the clarifiers, and now he had a special attorney appointment on the roster. Why was that? Dr. Wilson asked why was the city lawyering up? They must be expecting lawsuits. And he asked who was suing. And he was basically like, we cannot keep doing business the same for 40 years. My little friend said that she bumped my arm because she read what she read me. Well, you know, and And I, I'm gonna be honest with you. We're some ghetto people in this little ghetto town. Because I was too tickled, baby. I was like, uh-uh. I went on and left out of there because I don't, I don't want to ever get to a place where I witness people in a, in a political setting become so emotionally fueled where physical actions can occur. That's dangerous, okay? I also feel like the city council meetings are almost a waste of time. Um, I'm getting more information for the citizens of Tallulah and the council members. And those of us who are tuning in in other states that just are gaining information by the research that I'm gathering. And I will attempt one more city council meeting to see if things can go a little bit better. Um, I'm definitely gonna stay abreast at current, but I'm not promising the you know, because it's, it's, it, we're basically seeing where the mayor is stealing money. I hate to be the one to say it. But we see it. And as a person who has two degrees and I feel very trapped in Tallulah. I feel we have no choice but to make him understand that this is not something we can stand for. I hope that the rest of us as citizens and the rest of the country understand that this is something that's going on everywhere. They have oppressed us in the United States of America. They've distracted us with football, video games, trying to keep up with the Joneses. They have not taken care of our infrastructure. They have not taken care of our water systems. They have depleted our resources and raised their salaries. Let's resist.